I'd like to call the order of the July 2022 meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda? Have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second?
Second.
On favor? Aye?
I made the motion.
Made it, Tim, second. They sort of did it at the same time.
You have two hard names.
Any changes to the agenda or comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Yes, I'm sorry, of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
On favor? Aye? Minutes are approved. So, well, we have no presentations, no one appears to be here for comment, and so we can go right to the new business presentation. And thank you for that. I was looking earlier and I was like, "Oh, I'm gonna have to bring my iPad to look at all this," but this was convenient.
So, just to do a quick background, I know you guys are probably all pretty familiar with the Conference of Transportation Plan, but the current plan was approved in March of 2019. It does provide the vision, Morrisville Transportation Vision for 2040, right, roadways, bike head, facility improvements. And then, the focus of tonight are the recommended round call and action items. In the plan, there are four to three of them, so we'll take a look at what's been completed, what we might have to prioritize. So, the agenda for the work session is to cover briefly the completed action items, ongoing ones, and spending a little bit more time on the ones that aren't completed. What we are looking for, staff has provided a recommendation of five, we're calling top priorities. What we would like the planning and zoning board to do is to either agree or change what those should be. We are looking at three to five action items that we would recommend to town council for staff to be working on over the next year. So that's kind of the goal, what we're hoping to achieve from this is a recommendation of three to five CTP action items to recommend to town council for staff to work on. So, in preparing for this, and the narrative that's also included in the larger spreadsheet, staff did talk with multiple departments. You will see that the items in here are not just things for planning department to work on. They expand engineering, public works, parks and recreation. So there's gonna be a collaborative nature on some of the action items themselves, which is why I also did, you know, talk with the different departments and see if there's things that are working on to kind of inform the progress and the narratives of this package. Of the 43 action items, five are marked as completed, one is in progress, nine are ongoing, and there are 28 that could be prioritized for action. There are seven of those that are in some, partially being completed or ongoing as well.
I just have a question. So, can you clarify a little bit more about these different levels? I mean, is that a percent complete? It's a little, they seem to all be a lot of overlap there. Like by the definition of those words?
Oh, complete or in progress?
Yeah.
Oh, so complete is kind of, you can check the box.
Right, right.
Done that. In progress means it is actively being worked on at the moment. We only have one, and I'll explain that one. Ongoing, and you'll see in some of those there, for example, coordination with Campo and NCDOT on different projects where we're actively engaged in working groups. It's something we're working on, but not really a check the box, we're done with it. And then, things that are, you know, prioritized for action, we might have, either we have not started those or maybe we've done components of them, and so it's been partially, partially done up. If that makes sense. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go through the completed, in progress, and ongoing ones. And then, I will pause if there's any types of questions or comments on those before moving into the ones to be prioritized. On these slides, I've focused on just the main bold headings. In the packets themselves, I have some sub-prints that goes into much more detail. It would be a little bit too much of a slide, so instead, I'll just focus on those main headings. So as far as the completed ones, we have number 39 on the list there. It is prioritizing instruction of freeway connections. And our Parks Department has taken a look at those. As far as creating kind of a priority list based on future projects that are coming that we can reference, whether there are things to work on, you know, earlier on or later. So I have marked it as maybe a prioritized list. And number 40, it is referring to, you know, considering implementation of access management strategies. Now, I have marked this as completed. It does depend on, it could be ongoing. You know, for things that come from the future, that we want to change in the UDO or to address other hazards. We changed last year, there was another minor one that was seen recently that became the planning board as well. So I have to mark that one as completed. For number 41, it is.
Can I? Sorry. Could you tell me the difference between just the item we just talked about and number 15? We'll talk about access management strategy.
Yeah, number 15 is specific to Morrisville Parkway only. And then, number 40 would be related to changing items in the UDO to accommodate, you know, new development, different development, and how to look at those.
Okay, we'll talk about 15 later.
And then, for number 41, it's taking a look at implementation improvement of coordinated traffic signal system in the town. So I have marked this one completed earlier, or a while, or so ago. The Western Route Signal Integration Study was released, Campo, did you got study? It looked at integrating Morrisville signals, Perry signals, as well as some type of, how the kind of, you know, one consolidated, you know, signal system as well. So, that was, this action item was focused on like, study only, so that's why I have marked it as complete. But there was a pretty in-depth study that was recently released for that. Number 42, it is the, now this is gonna relate to implementing a transit kind of, it says transit circulator. We have implemented the smart shuttle, utilizing the Transit Community Funding Area Program. So I have marked that one as complete. And number 43 was evaluating transit service, which we did have a public transportation study come out in 2019, and we have the smart shuttle self-driving. So I have marked that as complete. As far as in progress, there's just one, the Public Works Department has recently, our P that went out, it has, a contract has been executed for that. It will include a component that is looking at ADI, accessibility for crosswalks ramps. And so I have marked that as in progress. In terms of ongoing action items, it says looking at, you know, adjustments to UDO to accommodate recommendations in the CTP. I've also kind of just, unless it is on, you know, we make changes to the UDO as, you know, new information arises, new issues come up. So that's gonna just work as ongoing unless there are specific items that want to help them out with those actions. In regard to number 30, it is conducting an audit and revision of the capital investment program annually to make sure that it is consistent with CTP recommendations. The town does do a four-year update every four years, there's an update to the IP. And that will be happening, that's around the happening in fall. So we will be looking at, and as part of that process, they always look at proof plans, whether it's CTP, whether it's a master plan, and making sure things that are in that townwide capital investment program are consistent with those. So I have marked this as ongoing since it is something that will be, you know, set back.
Can I ask you a question about that? So, when you look at number 30, it's, and most of these are ongoing projects. And then we look at the ones that we want to categorize. On number ones to five, it seems like there's a mix between things that are kind of operational, steady-state type of activities, like number one and three, every five years, every, you know, annually. And then, two, four, and five are project-based. They seem to be one-time events. Is there, I mean, certain level of just bandwidth that you guys have, overall, that we're looking at? So that, as an example, all of these steady-state things have to be done? And they're just part of what goes on, and really what we're trying to do is coordinate or look at the priority for one-time projects? Is there a difference there?
Yeah, for all these ongoing ones, really just sort of mention them as a, as kind of a recap note that these, you know, were action items in the CTP. There are things that we kind of do as a routine part of our jobs or as projects come up. And then, looking at things to be prioritized do seem more kind of like a one-time thing or creating a new policy that would help something for us that we're doing on a continual basis. And one example was, I'll get to as far as one of our recommendations called superbetterment for new roads. And so, although it would be kind of one-time to kind of create that, and maybe there's modifications over time, that would help, you know, annualize as projects.
So, but is it not to jump ahead, so when you look at like, that number one and number three, those seem to be annual things. Are those things that you just do and they have to be done? I'm trying to look at how those, you see what I mean?
Yeah, so right now, they're, and just for reference, number one is the five-year update of the CTP. And then, number three is the annual review of list of committed projects. And so, for those, they are not, you know, set in stone, they're just happening, you know, on those cycles, which is why I've kind of brought them onto the high priority because making sure, you know, we want to look at that, make sure we accomplish five-year update, because that's kind of a typical cycle, but it's not required. And then, making sure we have a process to review project annually outside of other types of cycles that might happen.
So, so for these two items, you mentioned it is not must-have. Defined by who?
I don't think there's statutory required, like, I guess it's like.
Understand, but operationally, or let's put it this way, if we all say, we have been saying this over and over again, that a 40-year or 20-year transportation plan is meaningless. You have to come and revisit it every, you know, few years. So, I'm surprised to even hear that we don't have this as a action to do every so often.
Yeah, I mean, that's where it's.
It was just not required at all, is what she's saying.
I get it, but it's still to me, you know, what Tim was saying, it's operational. That you have, you should be doing it. Now, if you are asking us to prioritize those works, then obviously, they are, they are the ones you need to do. But then, that means, is it going to take you away from something else? That, that's what I think Tim was trying to get to.
Yeah, looking at just bandwidth of service, so if there are things that, that fall into this annual or cyclical calendar that you have to do, is that just part of the nature that you have? And then, that's your, just your bandwidth, and then you have additional projects that you want to prioritize within the confines of that bandwidth. So, these are, if these, so said simply, should one and three be ongoing projects? That you just have as part of your operational work? And then, we're looking to prioritize things that are one-time or new?
Yeah, and I think with those two items, as far as, you know, like, the five-year update and why that's on there, kind of being important is making sure there are, you know, you'll see various capabilities to, how you kind of get around with your five-year update, it's a seven-year update. Or, you know, prioritizing it as, this is definitely something we want to look at, we want to get to a five-year update and have that opportunity, but also have that opportunity, if it's a minor update, you know, looking at whether it's something that's minor that can be done in-house or whether it's something that's more substantial that requires consulting. And in that case, we need to plan for budget, what would that cost in getting in that budget cycle. So I think that there is a variety of considerations that, that happen, and it's why I've kind of brought that up as an item to prioritize to figure out how we want to accomplish that five-year update, for example. And we can jump back to those when we hop down to the, the top priorities, but I'm glad you brought it up. And as part of the discussion, it's awesome why we're limited to three to five items, knowing sort of bandwidth of, you know, what can be accomplished, or what can be targeted at a reasonable time as well. So keep it in mind. All right, so I will hop down to number 31 on here. And this is another one to relate to Triangle Bike Way and continuing to follow efforts promoting it. And I've marked this as ongoing because we do first debate in the advisory committee for it. I've also, I put a note in the narrative, I believe, as well, with the, if we do an update, considering the Triangle Bike Way as part of that provision and looking at connections to that, should that future bike way be constructed? And then, number 32 is to plan, to develop a plan for implementation, sign templates and signage to inform and educate community about the side paths and greenways. Parks and Recreation Department does have a program which they put out signage. They have been working on things over, several years, so I have marked that as something ongoing that our Parks Department does consider. And that's kind of similar with number 33 as far as weight mining signage, trip lane. This is the Parks Department does, I think we look at, we also work with our department with regard to, markers can be helpful to people that are walking, to know how far you walk, but they can also be helpful guides for emergency response as well. Number 34 is really focused on reviewing development proposals that go along with section 585 of the UDO. Do review plans as they come in, work compliance with UDO, compliance with CTP. So I've marked that as ongoing, something that we do as projects come in. And then, the next one is, I was making sure it didn't kind of, yes, the next three kind of all go together. Talking about coordination and working with NCDOT, Campo, other regional partners, working with those regional partners to prioritize transit improvements as well as coordinating expansion of bus service. So, just as a part of the type of this kind of tricky things that staff has created, a variety of different committees, whether it is the PTA rail, Rapid Life, Campo, and Triangle Bike Way. So those are all kind of ongoing as far as whether it's stakeholder engagement. So those were the summary of items that were either complete, in progress, or ongoing. So I did want to check if there were any questions before we jump into, we'll have a little bit more discussion of the not yet completed action items.
Just one other on the practicality of it. So, if something gets raised to high priority, does that change the level of resources that are assigned to it? Do other things drop off? Kind of what is the implication of the exercise post it being done?
As far as the ongoing items?
No, just, just the ones that we're looking to prioritize. So, you, you move something from mid to high? I mean, does it get more resources, do other things drop off and not get done for that? I mean, what's the overall implication of the shuffling?
Yeah, and so, as I have them on the list, there's high, medium, and low. Essentially, the focus would be only on whatever is selected for the high priority. There could be things that come along the way as the year goes on, that maybe there's another project that comes up and somehow it just is needed enough to work something else onto it. That may happen as well, but where we want to, yeah, focus our energy and attention on that. So, if something is dropped off that high, we have to move down or something else to move up, then, yeah, it would, other things would probably not.
As we look at the high priority items, are we ranking those like one to five? Or are we just kind of considering them as a group?
I have it considering as a group, but if it is, it deserves the planning board to actually rank those among them, you can do that as well. But I have, do not have them ranked in particular. So what I'll do is, and I touched on a few of these things as well, and kind of the consideration that did go into thinking about what the top items may be is really us looking at, you know, there's kind of complexity and cost, and there may be change in conditions since the CTP was first adopted, that maybe something is a lower priority than it was previously thought to be. So, what I will do is, I will run through these different action items. It would be probably most helpful if you want to know which ones you want to go back to for further discussion.
I agree.
I don't know if we need to have a keep the whole list, and then you kind of see what all this on there, maybe how they relate to each other, and then jumping back for discussion. On the first slide, it is focused on the top four high priorities. These are the ones that staff is recommending kind of to board to begin working on in the next year. We did that already. With the CTP five-year update, this is not actually really actively I prioritize it on here to come up with a plan of how we're gonna get that done. As more so the action items determining whether it's in-house, whether we need extra budget to be able to accomplish that. The next one is looking at developing and adopting an official policy guide to funding for funding of betterment. And this is associated with NCDOT projects. So with a lot of projects, NCDOT comes in with a, you know, a basic section of what they are, you know, willing to put in based on the road type. Now, in some cases, we want a wider sidewalk or there may be landscape funding associated with it. And so, having a better idea of, you know, especially, give an example of landscape funding, you know, like where are the focus areas, what do we want to do with that? Or if there's other things that we want to or need to be asking with these different betterments. So kind of developing a policy regarding that, if they also cost money to the town. So making sure that, you know, we have a process to be able to fund those betterments we would like to happen with their pressure. The third item on the list is to review the list of committed and priority projects on an annual basis. And the reason I put this one on here on this kind of annual basis is normally, I say normally, in the past, whenever there has been this state transportation improvement program that's come through, it's usually been on a two-year cycle. And during that cycle, the town prioritizes projects that, you know, mean the most to the town. We'd like to see advanced for funding. There's been this turnaround, it's a four-year cycle, so it's kind of giving, and NCDOT does this, was not accepting any new projects in this cycle. So it kind of creates some different gaps at when we're maybe looking at projects and kind of reminding ourselves what are the top priorities, do we want to change the priorities based on changing conditions in the town? And so, setting up a process that may be independent of these other ones that happens on an annual basis is why I've included that on the list.
Can I ask you a question in general, right? Do we have an, you know, estimate of work involved in each one of these? And how many man-hours is each one of these going to take? I'm just trying to ga- gauge, because, you know, to me, again, like, developing and adopting the five-year plan or doing annual, it could be a one-day affair, it could be a one-month affair, right? So I'm trying to gauge what, what, what's the time commitment for each one of these activity that will be helpful?
And I'm gonna answer this as a deck. And that, and you'll see too, as we go through some of the medium priority items, depending on some of the depth of direction that some of these go.
Sure, but, but best-case scenario based upon experience, you know, there is always a thumb rule, right? These kinds of things, we are not asking you for a, you know.
And I can, I can probably go like, real medium, high-level effort in which, say, number one and three, like, the lower end. It would require number three, for example, with all these committed projects. You know, really setting up that process, coming, having all those projects, whether there is actual a review cycle that happens that goes through, make some count as well. All takes some time to prepare those. The CTP, you know, evaluating the update, I can see having, you know, some options of level of, you know, what level of update do we want to do? And so those considerations. The betterment example that would require, I'd say, medium level of work based on the number of departments that are involved. And then, especially if we are going to be considering things as far as, I quit. Let's see, we might also have an interest in, you know, creating things that are standardization of whether it's benches or street camp, you know, like trash cans and things that kind of creating that street skate setups. We know this room is coming in, this is what we want from here. These are our focus areas for key entrance ways for the town that we like to focus landscaping on. We have an NCDOT project. And so I think there's a variety of depth that could go beyond this, making sure how funding streams that we need or we'd like to have with these projects is available. So there could be, depending on the depth of that, there's a lot of questions to prioritize. The many areas in the town we have.
So, let, let me understand this better. So what you're saying is, we don't know what the projects are going to be for individual roads, but we want to set up and say, hey, if, you know, there is a road coming up, Four Lane Road, you know, 100 feet to, you know, let's say, one mile long, then what should we do about that? So you are talking about setting up standards in that manner? Or is it really trying to say, where should we put benches and, you know, which street should have it? And, and I struggle with that second part, right?
Yeah, and so the first part, I would say, after looking at, you know, whether it's multi-use path or any lightway, kind of refer back to where the CTP did, what guides where those would go. And part of that, and calling that first part then is, you know, these are things that we would like to say, add to a roadway to meet our CTP. There's a funding cost associated with it and making sure we have mechanisms to be able to fund those betterments we would like to see. The second part would be, what has been recommended is standardizing park skate elements, which includes benches, trash receptacles, whether it's decorative crosswalks, and then identifying focus areas for aesthetics with right-of-way landscaping. So say, for example, we may see widening of aviation parkway in the future. And by prioritizing, for example, with a lot of, and it's on the NCDOT products too, there's certain percentage of money that can be used for landscaping, and so where do we want to prioritize it? Do we want just street trees? Do we want to have shrubs in places? Do we want a focal point for an entrance? And so, those are a lot of questions that, by having that larger conversation and kind of identifying those areas, makes it easier for staff when a project comes in, you know, where it's focused, or where it asks for a specific type of landscaping as well with right-of-way. And this would be, you know, not dealing necessarily with private development, but, you know, public NCDOT projects. So that one could get, you know, it depends which way that might go, whether it could be a bit of work associated with that if we're looking at something a little bit more comprehensive, kind of direct, whether it's a business or go. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it does. And perhaps, it might be better to split it up into two parts. One, one being, I'm, we are going to define the strategy around how, what should be on the road. One, one being, I'm, we are going to define the strategy around how, what should be on the roads, right? And the other part may be subjective based upon whether it's a, you know, highway road, a street road, or something else, right?
And you'll see too with some of these, because the action items are, there might be, there are action items we don't always have specifically defined in there. Like you would do, maybe see a need to accomplish this. I think part of the goal is to say like, we have an interest in, you know, doing something with this action item. And then should it be prioritized, you know, it would, we would get in more depth of that and how best to accomplish that. But there are certain things under an action item that's like, oh, we're going to have to include X, Y, and Z. If we are talking about this one, then I think those are important to hear and get feedback as well. But with any of these, there's going to be a bit more work to figuring out all those kind of separate ones. And then I do have a number of war in here, which is to evaluate the Church Street cross-section, provide four cane foot lanes with shared lane markings. That is the title of it. The reason I selected this when they go on here, not necessarily that we want to go in and put charros on Church Street, which are those shared lane markings. But looking at an opportunity, there's different development that's happening on Church Street. How do we kind of want to maybe look at that cross-section and whether or not there's opportunities rather than having charros on the road? There is, make sure I had the Sawmill freeway, which is in the CTP, it's not fully developed yet. Whether there's opportunities to make those connections to the freeway, that becomes more of the focal point of bicycle usage versus shared lane marking. So it was more of an opportunity to evaluate that cross-section necessarily than looking specifically to do that item that points to there. So that is why I've written this in the pocket and looking at that as an opportunity to figure what we want to do.
So when you say cross-section, you are not really referring to the entire Church Street. You are referring to a portion of Church Street.
It could be the entire Church Street, likely just a portion of it, say Morrisville, Carpenter Road, up to McCrimmon, that kind of parallel where the Sawmill freeway would be. But I think there could be opportunities to look at the whole thing to do that. And I think that's where we get into if the item is prioritized, we do this for, what, you know, what do we want to look at? Do we want to look at just say my group, all of it and having that discussion as well?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was, I was thinking that would fall under betterment as well, right? As opposed to being its own separate thing.
The betterment is when the DOT is working on something, we kick in, this is something we would do ourself, I think.
Don't, that's not how I understood it.
Can I ask a question real quick? Can, can we stick to the process and maybe hold in the numbers? We're never going to get through this.
I do think, yeah, I think the best thing would be to do is let her go through all these things. Unless there's some kind of serious question that needs to be dealt with, let's go through all these. Because I think what we're going to do is maybe, there may be some desire for some medium items to percolate up into the top. And we need to go through all these items to even have that chance to do that without, you know, so, yeah, let's.
All right, well, and these are ones that we would, I think, top priority ones, a little more especially anyway, but I think it'll help kind of inform all of the process and what you can hear and what you're going to do. So number, number five, this one is coordinating NCDOT to determine locations and scope of recommended intersection improvements that were, there is a list in CTP that we would work on. Some intersections are maybe approved without the projects, but there are more on the list and kind of focusing on where we could improve intersections more than NCDOT is a priority. So the next one, the next section here are medium, kind of a medium priority projects. So not necessarily that, you know, these don't warrant the same, you know, level of attention. We can't do everything at once, so there are ones that, you know, got lumped down to the medium priority. This first one here is looking at determining a methodology when working on road projects to make sure with the crossing, crosswalk markings, pedestrian signal phase, the ADA client features. Kind of having a methodology to do that. It's not that we don't already do this, looking at independent projects, but, you know, having either a consistent process and, you know, the way that we look at things. There has been some, you know, some interest in having a more standardized methodology. It is here as a medium item, what we do with them independently. The next one is an opportunity to take recommendations that are in the CTP from multi-use paths and incorporate those specifically into the engineering, designing, construction manual. There's another item we'll touch on later. There's a few, a few items that are recommendations to add into the ABD, PCM. So there are some things you'll see that reference other numbers as well as potentially action items that we can find together. The next one, number eight here, is to amend the conference of transportation plans annually to include new transportation network enhancements. And with this one, yes, Steph, on here, I did quite, you know, this one is considered, you know, recommend to just create a process that would update CTP annual, I mean, on a periodic basis, but it's not necessary to annually. Especially if you just approved the plan and you're making changes to it already, but if there are second-hand things that it might warrant having a specific process. For number nine, it's incorporating a streamlined nomenclature for multi-use paths in all of the town documents. So this is one, you know, where there would need to be an inventory of town documents, plans, ordinances, and trying to understand, well, how much of a change is this and what would be involved with that? But it would be really just making sure there's consistency with how the nomenclature is for multi-use paths. So these sidecars, some cases, freeways, and making sure it's all consistent. Number 10 is evaluating all unsignalized curried lane crossings and looking at opportunities for enhancements. Those crosswalks or signs or signals for mid-block crossings. So if there is a project going in, these things are looked at and if there's not been a comprehensive evaluation of all unsignalized curried crossings, what is an item that could be recommended for prioritization? Number 11, the active case study of plan is a plan that was adopted in 2017. So prioritizing this one would require taking stock of the items, the recommendations within that plan and deciding, you know, how to implement those. So that is something else to consider. Number 12 is developing a cross-section for greenways to accommodate emergency vehicles. And with this one, all the greenways are designed to accommodate UTVs and the altering vehicles. They're not designed necessarily to accommodate fire trucks or ambulances. In some cases, that's the basic purpose of it, of the greenway, which you have to have such a wide section that can be able to accommodate that. But prioritizing this item might include looking at enhanced emergency access for best practices related to safety with emergency access. So there could be some things that are done with this one as well. So I did want to mention that because that was maybe a recurring higher priority. Number 13 is developing intersection safety improvement study program for all intersections in the town. Last year, there was a study completed, I, when I was here, some months ago, I touched on, there was 10 intersections that were studied. There is room for studying plenty more intersections throughout the town. So if this was prioritized, it could, you know, handle more of intersections and could, with this item. So there were some, I've marked it also, you know, some work was done just because there was 10 ways that they studied. The number 14 is to complete the study of transportation-related maintenance infrastructure opportunities. I have noted in the narrative that the town has done some projects in which we've created permeable papers, for example, but there hasn't kind of comprehensive study of transportation-related maintenance infrastructure opportunities. So it could be prioritized for action. And then this is just the last slide, medium priorities. It gets back to those that I mentioned earlier, I mean, developing access, development access management strategy in Morrisville Parkway. This one I have on here noted as also ongoing. There's been a variety of different things, efforts going on along Morrisville Parkway. There was a few intersections included in that intersection study last year. There's also been ongoing related safety discussions with NCDOT as well as looking at streamlined small car crossings on Morrisville Parkway. There are ongoing efforts, but this one doesn't refer to like one, one single comprehensive study to Morrisville Parkway. Number 16 is support efforts and partner agencies with other public and private entities to promote intelligent transportation systems. I guess for transportation demand management improvement, also known as TDM. In regard to the TDM, there are opportunities, grant opportunities to find a way to control the surveillance or NCDOT to have matching grant opportunities. One thing to note with TDM activities is they're non-structural based. So they are looking at initiatives to promote alternative transportation with those. So if that was of interest, that's the item to promote. In regard to ITS, we do have Morrisville's smart initiative plan, the town's smart plan going to be. And they're looking at a smart corridor as far as piloting a variety of different ITS technologies to be able to monitor traffic to get different types of counts. It is something that made in the August timeframe and our P might go out to kind of get some of those items in the works to test out some pilots of how we want these ITS better in the town. And then the other thing related to ITS that I wanted to mention is in the draft STIP that is out, there is some funding, maybe FY26, to help support some signal, county-wide signal ITS, county-wide ITS and signal upgrades as well. So there is some different movements on the ITS front and I would probably suggest that if it was prioritized in this one, that it might just be the transportation command management way back. The next 20 items, so 78, I see, these in some ways are kind of similar, a little bit different. They all do focus on looking at crossings, whether it's providing more, or access for crossings regarding the railroads. It could have the connectivity that might be lost there, looking at grade separations and then also, I don't know. Here on Morrisville Carpenter Road, it's a 4th grade separation, it has been my understanding in the past, maybe not as favorable to use in the top of the district for resources. And so there is right now in association with the aviation parkway widening at sort of that grade solution that's included with that one. But in terms of all of the crossings, we do have happening built in soon, some kind of steer. We're familiar with it on the Carpenter flyover, so that will get rid of the grade crossing at that location. In the CTP, we also have some future point in time, sort of CTP at the airport boulevard in phase two, which would have a flyover over the railroad and provide that additional access. And then with the Carpenter Road, it has to act great crossing, but also knowing that commuter rail may happen in the future. There might be an additional need to look at that location, study it, other things that might be changing there in the future. So those, I mean, that's a little bit of background on some of the existing conditions and whether that can be, if any of those were being considered. But they're, they're kind of similar in, in some cases. And then the last medium priority is to evaluate and develop electric vehicle charging station policy and ordinance requirements. So with this one, the UDO does not require U V charging stations for new developments, but there are some provisions in it. Also, I think this is a medium priority as well, supports some of the sustainability efforts that the town is doing. The public board department has sustainability initiatives as well, and that might help support some of that. And then the last line I have of action items is just the low priority action items. So we'll just, we'll just do these points as well. First one, number 21 there, is to ensure design standards to increase pedestrian activity when building large medians. The more detailed description describes this because some of the large medians will be here, supposed to be designed to hurt bus lanes at some point in the future. And so it's really just making sure that, so looking at pedestrians are able to, you know, efficiently use medians without creating a problem. So this is low priority because anytime a new median is put in or one is changed, pedestrian access is looked at. So it didn't seem to be a high priority at this point in time. For number 22, this is suggesting to revisit the non-motorized recommendations of the CTP to see if there needs to be any adjustments based on the current park track master plan. I've listed this as a low priority only because I do think this can be considered in the five-year update of the CTP where we can look at it in a little bit more detail. Number 23 is create a section of the drive between NCDOT 4 and International Drive. This would affect two commercial properties. The reason it's on the list is there were changes to road connectivity in the current CTP. And so there's been two sections in that four drive that will not connect. And so it may be confusing to people trying to get allocation. But it is a low priority because it only affects two commercial properties, but it could be something that is considered as well. Number 24 is create a policy for the provision of landscaping and aesthetic elements regarding the roundabouts. A lot of roundabouts that we do have are internal to residential developments or commercial developments. There's also a whole, whole host of, you know, size and dimensional things and that can be, a range of things that can be considered. So you could get really in-depth on roundabouts, whether it's landscaping, the aesthetics, or different kinds of sizes of decorative elements. That definitely would be a high priority, but have lots of things to put in, there's some that, there's some that are going to be prioritized. Number 25 is to create a stacking and access policy for new schools. This is focused on town owned roads and not necessarily NCDOT owned roads. The only reason I've listed it as a low priority is we don't have lots of new schools being started in the Morrisville. A new high school that will hopefully be coming on board sometime in the future. But in that, the recommendation was focused on town-owned roads and new schools, it didn't seem to be a high priority. Number 26 is evaluate or guiding and devising parking decks for private apartments. It doesn't seem to be a very top priority. We don't have a lot of parking decks, so whether there's interest in how about the parking decks, so I'm basically going to go with that. Number 27 is develop cross-sections for emergency access and incorporate them in the engineering, designing, construction manual. This is listed as a low priority because typically, our apartment standards are referred to and they kind of help decide, you know, what are the requirements to access. Although there is the opportunity to more formally incorporate them into the EDCM. But I've listed it as low because there are mechanisms out there to kind of review that right now. And the last one is to evaluate and support joint public-private parking options, such as parkeride lots. Right now, I don't see that there's lots of opportunity, mostly you see that with transit, to try and have parkeride lots, maybe something that's looked at in the future. For example, with the commuter rail and that commuter rail stations, they have surface lots and they, I know Grothaiville has been interested in port friendships. And whether or not there are a parking deck or four parking options as well, listed as low priority since those details, you know, aren't far enough along, I really consider that. So based on all of that, we will, I will, we can set for more discussion, we can jump back to the other items. But you know, if there's a discussion in the top five list or if there are questions that you have, I can try and answer those.
I have a question with regard to number six, which is the enhancements to. I have a question with regard to number six, which is the enhancements to the crossings, you know, such as marked crosswalks, pedestrian signals. It's kind of a specific question, but it goes to a larger point. Do those enhancements include things that would aid, you know, like the hearing impaired or the vision impaired?
Whatever the standard, and unfortunately I do not, you know, review those in detail, but I know they have kind of like rumble, the bumps that they have for the crossings that are required for ADA. I do not know about as far as hearing impaired. I know a lot of times they'll have the speakers at the crosswalk and tell that, a few different things. But if it is something that is specifically required for ADA compliance, that would, that would be in there, but there's things that should be at a different level or need to consider at a different level, I think that's possible.
The reason I asked that is because one of the criteria I used when going through these was, you know, does it directly impact public safety? Several of them do, like, you know, some of them do it tangentially, but others really directly. And, you know, I don't necessarily say that those have to go to the high priority, but in my opinion, maybe the higher portion of the medium priority. And then the other comment I just wanted to make was, there's not many, but there's a few in both the high, medium, I don't know if there are any of the low priority, where action is ongoing. And I'm just wondering, if an action is ongoing, does it make sense to leave it kind of at a less than high priority? Because if it's ongoing, maybe you can get it done quickly and there's your other check mark, you know? So just general comments I thought about.
Yeah, I guess some of the challenges of some of the, there might be ones that are sort of slightly, you know, they might be easier to do and to kind of put in there, but are they a high priority right now or not? And it's sort of weighing all of those options as well. And then again, sort of that, you know, kind of the interpretation of what the action item is as well, sort of that level of, you know, what things do we, what do we want to do with that as well, all come into play within this discussion.
Thank you.
So you're basically looking for us to either say, hey, we think your top five is good. That's it. Or I guess, try, this is a whole lot to go through. And it was very helpful, the expanded descriptions in this, because, you know, what was in the, you know, that is very helpful. I'm just wondering if we should, does anyone have any particular items that they wanted to consider elevating? We should maybe take one quick pass through that. Like, because this, this could go on for three hours.
Yeah, I had a couple.
So maybe we should just go down the line. If anybody wants to throw the numbers out there that we would think about elevating into the top five, go through that and then we could potentially talk about them a little bit. But I don't know if, you know, I can make notes of the numbers here, I suppose. I mean, somehow, I'm just trying to find some way to make this productive and useful to you guys and not be just endless talking, because, I mean, we could really get into the weeds with a lot of these and that.
And that sounds helpful. If there were one on the list, you know, something that was in a medium or a low priority that you're, you saw, you're, this, this might be something you guys worth raising up a little bit.
So yeah, let's start with David and just let's say the items that you've got and then we'll just kind of quickly go through them. We can sort of circle back and we, maybe we find out we all agree on one thing and that's a pretty easy, you know.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could share with us more about item number twenty-five. I guess the way I read it, and I'm hoping you can explain it to us a little more in depth, but is that most schools are going to be along NCDOT-owned roadways and so they're already covered under those policies. But, I mean, it seems like if they are running with town-owned streets, it'd be important to consider, you know, what the town's policy is for, for access there to ensure, you know, pedestrian safety, make sure there's no congestion, people are getting held up going to and from work and just make sure that the families are safe going to and from school. I don't know if you could explain that a little bit more, because it seems like maybe a little bit higher than low priority.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's best to, you're going to run through the numbers?
Yeah, I think, let's, let's go through anything that we think we might want to have elevated first and let's just take a stock of that and then we can come back and talk about them. I mean, you know, because I could agree with them this, because I, the schools ruin the roads and they don't mind people parking all over, but we could, you know, that's going to just get into this long discussion and I don't know that's going to be productive to what she's trying to do, so.
Fair enough. So just two, two things. So number five, you already have it aligned. Looking, looking to see if we can combine number five and include that. And then the other one, looking to raise consideration is number nineteen.
Are you number five and nineteen?
Five and nineteen.
So, I'm sorry.
Those are.
Any numbers that were raised to the list?
Or if you wanted to bump something down, like, either way, yeah.
Also, number one priority was item number three. Review the list of committed and priority projects. I just think it's important to get eyes on these things as often as possible. It, you know, it gives some continuity and, you know, lets the public and potential investors, developers, you know, know what cities, the towns' plans are and things like that. My lowest priority of the five, high priority ones was the number four, the evaluate the church street crossings. I was just trying to keep the high priority ones kind of more general, that affect more people. So that's that.
And can just, if you can raise your mic up a little bit, just to make sure, because just so she can hear and then it can be recorded, so if she needs to go back. San Joe, do you have anything you would want to elevate or lower? So anything in the lower section you think really that should have been in the top or anything at the top you think, oh, that's a waste of time and let's move it down?
I, I think we need to have the discussion around the number fifteen. I'm not sure that really makes the medium priority. And then we need to perhaps beverage the work on signal coordination that is going on. So I would look at, you know, making number sixteen a higher priority. And lastly, you know, any work related to the aviation Parkway expansion, we need to consider that, given that it's a bigger road that, I mean, we are now going to have four lanes on this side of the intersection converging into a two lane on the other side. And it's going to create a lot of bottlenecks and we need to figure out how do we get that one faster.
For me, probably I would switch four and six, just, and I apologize, I'm not a biker and so maybe there is a big priority there, but when I looked at that, the impact of the percentage of the community just seemed, I, I just didn't understand it. So it might be for the city that might work well, but for me, I looked at it and I thought the other one impacted more people. And then, I apologize, David, you're new. I didn't know if you knew all of these forty-two came out of a twenty-five-year plan that consultants paid. So that whole list, I didn't know if you knew that since you haven't been here long, but this whole list is listed in recommendations of things to work on over the next twenty-five years. So that's, there's a lot more than just these couple pages, so I just wanted to kind of reset. Sorry if we forgot about you being new here. Maybe you can get him a copy at one point of the, if he doesn't have the transportation guide?
I think I have a copy of that.
Do you? Do you? Okay.
If you don't, we will get you one.
All right, sorry, I just wanted to make sure as we're rolling through all these, I thought, all these poor guys flipping through these pages.
All right, so is anybody, so I was trying to think, so I do think there were, are some things that can be combined and I, and I, and I do kind of like, number six, I felt like could be bumped up. I mean, and it may not be anything that's really that much bandwidth to take up, but you know, there are probably some intersections that could improve safety. That also sort of satisfies like a federal law, the ADA, and it makes things safer for people to use. And a lot of these improvements for ADA tend to make it easier for able-bodied people to use. So I think there's a lot of benefit to that, that you could potentially, you know, move that up. You know, and then the same thing, like seven and nine seem like, that's kind of like, they should just be one thing. You know, there's some, you know, I didn't really see any other things that were, I thought for sure should be bumped up, other than maybe number six.
Just a question for that, number six, going back to what it's here, is, is this something that is done all the time? Is this an ongoing activity? It's listed here as an ongoing activity. Is there something that's specific that needs to be done?
Sort of ongoing in that, you know, when there are projects that come up, there are things that are looked at, but it's kind of having more of a process that things are done consistently or like this is what we want to do on all these projects. So really, what I put in the narrative, it says like to form up the methodology for considering where and when certain recommendations are made. So example, whether it's, you know, crossing with a flashing beacon or different, or different things to help pedestrians get across the road or, you know, really I think, and I have had some interest in this one in particular, so it's got to kind of cause your attention as well in that it would be actually helpful to have some of that methodology and that consideration.
That makes sense.
Set up ahead of times when you're not kind of dealing with things that are small.
Or just kind of comprehensive look even at what we, we have. I mean, and the other thing that I thought, and this is sort of only because of what it affects, is number twenty with the EV charging. You know, well, I have an electric car, but I, you know, when I go into houses and I see houses, you know, you're building a house, it's supposed to be there for fifty years, hundred years. You know, there are some minor things you can do in a house that can either really kill someone being able to put in a charging point in that, in the garage, let's say, or outside the house, or make it very easy, you know, and a lot of that depends on where the electrical panel is and then how that is set up. So, I mean, I think that would be good to, does that need to be in the very top priority? No, but on the other hand, every day goes by, the new neighborhood is approved, then they build newer houses. If they don't build them in a way that allows charging, it means that somebody might have to pay five thousand dollars to install the charger later rather than five hundred. So that could be something that's, I, I don't know how much bandwidth that would really take up to do.
I think one, one challenge with that particular with say, single-family homes, maybe it was like a multi-family development and it was a requirement that you have to have five charging stations or things, but even it gets into kind of the building code or the construction of, of units or single-family homes, that I don't know that we have a mechanism to kind of regulate that other than when we are deciding more, so informational items to, you know.
So, so we can't pass like any local, I mean, or make any policy that would affect how, how that would be done?
Something we can pull into, but I'd be interested.
Yeah, there was a bill proposed last year in the General Assembly that would have required accommodation for EV chargers with single-family homes, that you had to provide something in the garage. I don't know, I don't believe that one made it through, but I'm not sure if it was one of the ones that carried over into this session. So we could look at that as well. With the non-residential, if I could suggest, we have our land use plan implementation consultant just entered into a contract with House Levine to come back and work on more TOD stuff and UDO update to align the UDO with the land use plan. As part of that, we were also going to give House Levine staff's list of miscellaneous updates that, you know, we've been wanting to get to for a while, but we've been prioritizing as well, but it seemed like a good opportunity to kind of plow through those and get those done. So we could specifically ask them to look at the EV charging regulations as part of that.
Well, and I don't even know if, I mean, you know, widespread charging would help a lot of people. You know, it seems crazy to think that in twenty-five years, people are going to be driving gas cars. I mean, that just seems like a fact that's going to happen, that people will change. But I mean, is it, should we, I guess, you know, they don't have to be free, but I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm really more thinking about, most people would charge at home. I mean, unless you live in a situation that was a multifamily, I think you'd be, it would help more there than like at an office, I think, because, you know, you're going to have a hundred people there trying to get into spots. And unless you require every spot in that, that's, it's just a lot more easy to deal with it on a small house basis than is trying to put in twenty chargers and a parking lot of two hundred or whatever you wanted to come up with, you know, in a commercial type facility. I, so that's kind of, I don't know if anybody else has any discussion. I just, you know, again, just because of my job and seeing houses and the way they're built and then having a car, it just makes you realize that a lot of people, even my own neighborhood, like Savannah has rear detached garages. It's quite expensive to run a line out to your garage that's large enough to charge a car. You know, but then again, on certain houses, like, you know, if the electrical panel is in the garage, then it's very easy, so.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if it's prioritized, you know, or, you know, kind of a medium, high, you know, if they're kind of secondary, you want to look at, or if you want to elevate it to a high priority, that, you know, it's, you know, consider what are, you know, what are the options to address your particular concern and, you know, how much, you know, for the community that wants to, for the two more with regard to the prioritizing aspect. Do you have any other?
No, that, that was all I had come up with, really. So it sounds like there's a pretty good consensus on the top, say, five or six, then it.
It does look like, from what I'm hearing, there's not a lot of consensus to keep number four, which is regarding the church street cross section at a high priority, and instead prioritizing number, and I will go back to another couple of these too, I want to go back and talk about quickly that were mentioned, but just sort of based on what I'm hearing, prioritizing number six as a high priority, kind of swapping number four.
That seems.
Yeah, fair, yeah.
Yep.
I'm just taking the nearest number to come on. And then I did want to just jump back really quick, because there was a question earlier on number twenty-five, and that was a low priority with regard to the school access. The way it looks more certain is regarding new schools and town roads only. I know they have a lot of concern with existing schools and it's sort of how best to accommodate that, so this is one of kind of, you know, rewarded to take changes lately. I think too, if we do look at addressing new schools, some of that may fall onto the town to make different changes if there's like longer turn lanes or different things as well, so we do want to mention that, but this one was very specific to just new schools and town roads.
Could this be folded in to number eleven?
Can you add the rest of that?
Yeah, I mean, it's still active kids strategy.
I think this is, eleven reduces the need for twenty-five.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I meant, is look at them together, right? Because we essentially want more kids to walk to school rather than us to school.
But the problem with that particular one is just the fact that a lot of the schools don't really, the school system isn't going to play ball with you and have people that are near a school going to that school. That, that's, I think, the bigger problem with that. So that would be a lot of coordination with Wade County and probably would have, I don't see how you could change the, you know, way the schools work.
Yeah, I mean, the active strategy does bring in some variety of things that, you know, whether it is, you know, walking by to school, whether it is, I think, also, you know, parks or recreation lines as well as interests related to that. But, you know, if that was something that was of interest, you know, more active, could be something that we look at more and how it's prioritized that might be able to buy if there are gaps in the sidewalk, for example, and trying to make sure the kids, if they want to or are, you know, able to, that they could have same ways to get to school. And then I did want to touch on, number five came up, was that, is that one that would to keep on the list or if you want more of a discussion on number five, which is regarding to aviation parkway?
I, I feel like that deserves to be there, I mean, because, I mean, those are small dollar changes that can sometimes make a pretty bigger, you know, outsized impact. I mean, you know, consider places like Morrisville Parkway where we lost a turn lane and now traffic backed up for two miles. And a turn lane there could help considerably and it isn't going to be that much money. So, you know, these are the target improvements we've looked at before, you know, so I feel like this should stay in the high.
Yeah, I would agree.
But won't that be ongoing though? I mean, to me, this is where I struggle, is some of these activities, I consider something that you ought to do regardless of whether there is priority or not. And when we are discussing with NCDOT, here are the four things that absolutely need to be talked through.
And I think when there is, say, for example, a new project coming in, there are things that we're looking at, but if there are, after, you know, depending on traffic conditions change over time or new issues come up that work, you know, maybe consider work a problem at different intersections previously. And so it's also looking at where are problem intersections and then prioritizing, you know, working with NCDOT on certain ones and making sure, because there is a list, I mean, for example, CTP identified. ones and making sure, um, because there is a list, I mean, for example, CTP identifies, you know, 13 intersections. Some will have improvements that are coming up in the future, um, but even with that list, it's a lot to tackle all at once. And so, you know, kind of also prioritizing that this is something we want to focus on intersections maybe versus something else on the list and making sure that we're putting, because it requires time and effort and coordination as well, and in some cases, additional funding.
And with that, it was number 13 in reference to number five?
Sure.
So I think you had that aligned where there was a study that was done, uh, on some of the intersection safety improvement, and then there could be additional ones done and it's referenced to number five? And I guess the question was, could those be combined? Is there enough bandwidth and funds to, to continue that program?
Yeah, and so I put, because they're both dealing with intersections, and so part of the conversation can be let's focus on the ones that were identified as CTP, um, to try and do improvements on, or, you know, 13 we want to focus on, trying to study more intersections and see, you know, what do we want to do here? And so they can be considered separately, together, in combination. It could be, this is one of the things where if there felt to be high priorities, it kind of gets, you know, moved up on the list and then from there we have to figure out, you know, what kinds of funding is needed, you know, how much money can we get for certain things? Maybe we can only study five intersections or maybe it's better to focus on different types of spots. So I think, um, you know, those are things where a lot more detail that needs to be figured out later, but it's whether or not those items at a high level are important enough to raise the priority to be working on sooner rather than later.
And then, oh, number two, um, so you're talking about, you know, this, all these different betterments, is, so I guess the policy, you're, you're going to talk about trying to implement a policy, right? I mean, because one of the things I do see is like you're talking about adding greenways, adding landscaping. Uh, the policy needs to somehow account for future maintenance, because I'll be honest, we don't maintain the greenway, I mean, the medians that we have. We have weeds that are like two and three feet tall all through town, all, all summer long. So I, I mean, there's the sort of first cost and then there's the ongoing, and I think sometimes maybe we go crazy and think, oh, we're going to have these great medians, but if we don't have a policy that kind of considers ongoing costs of, you know, who's going to maintain this thing?
I think that's a part of that kind of the discussion with policy is understanding that longer financial commitment to anything that goes along with it and with landscaping, you know, we want irrigation, do we not? Uh, there's a cost and all of that as well and kind of considering those things as a part of a policy and, and direction to help make this, make decisions, um, make us all listen set direction as to if it's kind of relating to the. And then I did hear, I think there was number, I'm just jumping back through some of these on the list as well, um, and hopefully I answered. There was a product number 19 with creating potential emergency access points throughout town. Do you not remember? Did you want to elaborate on that one?
Just looking at, again, for the, the safety concern, want to get any additional color around what would happen and when or?
I'm here, sorry.
So, so, yeah, so, so thinking about this is a medium priority, I mean, it, it touches on a lot of things. I mean, if, if it doesn't get raised, I mean, where is it, does it, again, where does it fall in the pecking order of, of when does it get actioned?
Yeah, and I think this is one of those where, for example, um, just by the nature of say, of, um, you know, if, if a rail happens and keeps moving up the list, we're going to have a lot more focus on, or also as, you know, aviation currently, you know, funding that goes through, that's going to be construction in the future, um, you know, focusing at Morrisville Carpenter, likely an intersection that receives a lot more attention versus other places, just by the nature of all the things that are going on. But if there's a larger concern of, you know, being able to see, can we get more connections somewhere else, can we maybe be looking at, um, flyers or other things that, that's where we raise up on the list, but I think by the nature of other projects happening, things will still be discussed, be worked on, just whether or not we want to prioritize that, say, in the next year to move faster on the list. And then I did have, um, is there any other questions on number 18 on that one? I didn't mention of number 15 and 16, so I just want to jump to those. So, yeah, this is the, um, management tracking for Parkway, number 16 with partnering with other agencies, Korea ITS and TDM, so if there was any more discussion or elaboration of having those ones in particular, if they were to elevate something or if there were questions?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the part about, when you look at the number 15 and you said, study the Morrisville corridor and look for intersection improvements, um, I would have thought that is something we, we would have, you know, would be done as part of the normal day-to-day operations part. Um, but, so what I'm perhaps not getting is, that one will provide us a longer term benefit, but on the other hand, if you focus on, you know, smarter signaling, smarter, uh, you know, ways of managing traffic, the biggest pain point that most people have is they look at current impact, right? So when I'm, I'm, where I'm trying to, where I'm struggling with is what is low effort, high impact, and what is the timeframe that we can get that, that impact realized, right? So the sooner we can, if, if it is a low effort and high impact with, with quicker return on investment, then those should automatically go higher up, right? And, and I would think the smarter corridor and ITS, these are things that we could prioritize higher compared to a study of, of, uh, Morrisville Parkway, because the study by itself is not going to give us any results. You have to then plan for rest of the improvement that might take another 15, 20 years.
And I will say, um, one good thing about the number 16 and the ITS, the things that I did mention about this corridor, I mean, those are things that are going forward with a pilot, um, as far as, you know, the RFP, um, as indicated that maybe in August that might go out. There are efforts underway to, we can work on this pilot, understanding what possibilities are. I mean, I think definitely that there's interest in kind of, put into kind of the write-up or narrative that goes along with this as well, that you got something that's of general interest. I, I think because those efforts are, um, you know, happening underway, it's kind of partially pushing that one forward and don't know if we need to be doing anything extra at this point in time or whether it's kind of prioritized to, you know, do something more. And these, I would say the efforts are happening through a lot of smart Morrisville, smart city initiatives, happening through IT department for a variety of levels of different things, um, one in particular is transportation.
And you're saying that these, these numbers aren't really a priority listing, correct?
Yeah, I would think.
So just because something's ahead of something doesn't necessarily mean in this list that it really has been prioritized more, right?
Okay, I mean, on the list as far as, um...
Outside the grouping, within a group, like is 15 higher than 16 or is that just a number you put on there?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't necessarily mean that that's a...
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but I, I was, the way I was looking at it is, you know, you said there are, among the highs, there are three that could potentially be in the low effort, right? And there are, there is one in the medium effort and since we switched the ADA one, I'm just thinking it is medium effort for, you know, just using that as a barometer.
And I think it kind of goes back to some of the conversation, um, this Church Street one, you know, maybe minimal impact to a certain area versus picking up, selecting a project that has a wider, um, town-wide impact.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, where I'm trying to think here is that you have listed top five and I'm wondering, do we need a top six? Because for the simple fact that, you know, three of top of the five are relatively low effort, right?
Which one would you add as the number six?
I don't know which one of these covers the aviation Parkway extension.
That's a DOT thing we can't change. I mean, that's not, there's...
I think the closest thing that we have is with regard to studying, I think it was number, maybe number 17, I can't remember what it is, um, that is, oh, maybe number...
18, number 18, right?
Yeah, 17 or 18 kind of get into that, study the grade crossing, um, kind of the gap is general.
I mean, that, that's like a, that is a 2040 project, I mean, at best, is it not? I mean, is it not?
Oh, with that...
Separating the grade of Morse, of Morrisville Carpenter at 54, I mean, we'll be lucky if that's done in the next 25 years, my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly not in the plan, but, um, it's kind of also my understanding, uh, like position of the town as well as, you know, the concerns of having a flyover in that particular location.
Right.
Versus an at-grade crossing, um, it's going to be a pass on the civil resources. Doesn't mean it can't be, you know, relooked at or it can't be, um, looked at for what kinds of other alternatives based on what NCU is currently providing, um, and those other options to get a rail coming in too. So I think that, you know, form a high priority and maybe not necessarily the specific wording that's in the action items, but kind of grouping it together, looking at that particular crossing or intersection as a high priority action item.
I, I mean, so do you have some, I guess...
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I feel like we're kind of...
Is our motion, or do we have a motion today of approving the top five or I guess what's our, what's our goal coming out of this meeting that you would like to see?
That's what I'm...
Yeah, the, the goal is based on the, goal is three to five, um, if there's something that we want to add on at the end of like this sort of secondary recommendation, um, a lot of it too was kind of gauging if there was like, uh, you know, a lot of high effort projects, but that, you know, having six might not be a good idea, but if there are things that is, for example, um, that intersection there at Morrisville Carpenter and railroad crossing, you know, we want to tag on and like, this is also something that is highly recommended to look at as well, um, it's of concern unless we want to kind of move it up on the list to replace something else. Um, I don't have a, you know, problem adding, you know, things to add on, like this is also a highly concerned project, but the goal would be three to five, specific recommendations. I don't need any specific order to town council, but, um, trying to also keep in mind projects to work on within the next year and sort of feasibility, that's all.
And I would just add on, we're looking at projects to get started on over the next year, kind of what's the next things to begin working on. There's been some questions about bandwidth and workload, um, within even just the top five recommended by staff, um, as we would dive into these, I would anticipate that many of these would take several months. So they would be the ones that we would go to and start working on next. That doesn't mean that each and every one of them will get started in the next year. We might be able to do, you know, depending, you know, get started on three or four, but then we're immediately moving on to your next high priority. But really figuring out how much time each of them takes, um, as Danielle indicated, we'll get into the steps and the timelines, once we have directions from yourself and ultimately the town council of what they want us to focus on.
So just to follow on to that, does it, a, a point next year, then if we're looking, if we, number three goes through, would that additional context then be provided? So here's the waterfall of projects that we have going on, um, we're now looking to reprioritize, here's actually bandwidth that's left and all of that, so you're going to have that?
Um, next year we might be also working on updating CTP as well, so some of these action items may be carried forward, there may be new ones, um, but the goal is, um, I, you know, for me, you know, we want to make sure that we are working on things that are in CTP and, um, the best way to, you know, rather than us picking and choosing is getting that feedback in the input and direction that helps prioritize some of these. But there are, there are a variety of, you know, projects and, um, initiatives and different things that go on, you know, throughout the town, um, or different types of transport, regional transportation committees, where certain projects are talked about and other things, I've listed a variety of ongoing activities as well. You know, there's a lot of things that we're keeping in mind as we're working on other projects, not to say, you know, we're narrowly only going to be looking at these things, but where to focus that, that energy, but a lot of the conversation issues that you guys have brought up, you know, that we're looking at too as projects in law.
So I, I guess, I don't, I feel like we don't have a lot more that we would want to elevate, so, I mean, do we have, feel like we have a consensus on these top five after the change?
For me?
I think we have a consensus on the top five after the, she rotated.
Are you thi, are you thinking switch four and six or leave it as is?
I think she already did do that.
Oh, okay.
She did, so I, I feel like, you know...
Do we need a motion for it?
I was wondering if anybody was wanting to make a motion, yeah.
The man at the marquee, all okay with the five, right?
David?
Yes.
I mean, so do I have a motion to?
I could make a motion that we approve the prioritization and we'll be swapping four and six.
Second.
All favor. Aye. So I guess you can move forward, thank you.
All right, great. The next step will be, um, leave us to the town council, so, um, as we present it to them and the recommendation and then we'll give ultimate confirmation of some of those top priorities. So thank you for, um, walking through all these with me, I know there was a lot and appreciate the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey. Um, so in terms of development activity in town, there continues to be a lot going on. Um, we did get a site plan application in for one of our own town projects, which was improvements to the Crabtree Creek Nature Park, so that is under review. Um, also had, um, an application submitted for a 312-unit multi-family development along the McCrimmon Parkway extension and a rezoning application submitted in, um, for perimeter, perimeter park area, um, wanting to rezone, um, to accommodate research labs, so that will be coming to eventually. We've also been, um, continuing to work on affordable housing implementation and Senior Planner Kittredge is heading up that project as well, um, but we recently, um, released a survey to town staff and school system staff, um, to evaluate the feasibility of a potential public servant housing choice program. So that survey was live, um, for I think three weeks, it is now closed. Um, we got, we think, a decent response in terms of the number that responded, um, but HRNA, our consultant, um, still needs to go through, um, those responses to see what, um, kind of recommendations might come out of that and, you know, it's all purely anonymous, they're sifting through the data and will provide us the, the consolidated information. HRNA is also in the process of meeting with various developers that do work in town, um, as part of their research into, um, potential UDO incentives to encourage affordable housing. So a lot going on, um, in the background right now with affordable housing, um, thinking that something will probably be to you early fall, um, to kind of provide some reactions and feedback and input into what direction we might head with different things. Um, there were no town council approvals, um, in June, however, the tree amendments that you previously reviewed and then, um, the miscellaneous amendments related to schools and master sign plan and a couple of access and circulation changes, those are all before town council right now. They were briefed on those items, um, Tuesday night. Um, the development agreement for International Drive is also before council right now. Um, and then in terms of, uh, site plans that were approved, you may recall, um, you had a rezoning application before you, it was several months ago, at least on Slater Road, um, the applicant was looking to do office on the north side of Slater and, and a rezoning for multi-family on the south side of Slater, um, those site plans came in and, uh, both the office and the multi-family have now been approved, so you may start seeing some dirt move up there relatively soon.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments, starting with Chris?
No other comments.
Sanjay?
Nope. No comments.
David?
No comments, just thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, same, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.